Welcome everyone to the Judiciary Committee meeting here in our store on room two, two, nine. My name is Carl Rose. I'm Chair of the Committee this meeting in YouTube livestream Venice for Judiciary Committee. Judiciary Committee's eleven AM agenda on one appointment to the District Court for the Second Circuit covering Maui County. The unbridled names of the dentists, I apologize if I mispronounce your name, Annalisa or Annalisa.
Annalisa.
Annalisa, Annalisa Bernard Lee. Professionally known as Annalisa Bernard. The other members of the Judiciary Committee are Vice Chair Keo Kaloli. Senator Acasio, Gabbard, Lee, Kim and Pavella. This hearing is being streamed live on YouTube. You can find links to view viewing out. All Senate hearings and meetings on the live and on demand video page of the Legislature's website. If you're interested in seeing the written testimony, go to the Legislature's website at www.caval.hawaii.gov. And the unlikely event that we have to abruptly end this hearing due to major technical difficulties will reconvene this afternoon at three PM in this room and via video conference and a public notice will be posted on the Legislature's website. Okay, for anyone testifying remotely, you'll be muted and video disabled until it's your turn to testify. And there is a two minute limit on testifiers' time. If we do have a temporary technical glitch, we'll try to get back to you and before the hearing is over, but if not, we'll apologize for the inconvenience. And I think that's it for now. Let's go ahead and start with the testifiers. First up is Brianne Wong Leong or Wong Leong and Kuchi or Sukia.
You hear me?
Yep, good.
Great. Hi, I'm here. I am a managing partner of my law firm and Ms. Bernard works for my law firm. I believe she's there along with our other managing partner Elizabeth Kuchia. And I just wanted to testify on behalf in support of her. She is an excellent attorney. We are extremely sorry to see her go. I think she is going to be a breath of fresh air for our judiciary and the county of Maui. And I'm mainly here to demonstrate my support and to answer any questions or concerns that either of you might have regarding her and her work while in my office for the past little over a year now. And I've known her since law school, so since about oh, one, oh, two at William Richardson. So I've known her personally and professionally after we became lawyers for very long.
All right, thank you. Members, since this is the only Zoom testifier, are there any questions for this testifier? If not, thank you very much for being here. Next testifier is Elizabeth. I'm sorry, I butchered your name, Sutia. Come on. Good morning.
Good morning. I am also a managing partner of Wong Leong Kuchia. Ms. Bernard is our associate attorney. And even though she is our associate, over the past year plus, I've learned so much from her. She's an excellent attorney. She's probably the, one of the smartest people that I know and I, well, I'm gonna miss her, working with her every day. I'm very excited to see what she's capable of doing on the bench. I know it'll be amazing.
Good.
Any questions?
The members, this is the only in person testifier we have other than HSB questions for this testifier. Okay, sure. Thank you very much. No, no, no questions. Thank you. Next, we have Jonathan Bell, Bell Berry in support, John Kim in support, Anna Craker in support, IK Roth Kurtman in support, Dana Susan in support, Melinda Fletcher Sistar in support, Jack Natick in support, Adrian Menor in support, Matthew Coleman in support, Brandon Siegel in support, David Jorgensen in support, Crystal Glendon in support. Okay, if you're here and you want to come up and I called your name, please do, but Kershaw Durante, Doris Law, both in support, Karen Bricky in support, Layden Alubi in support. Is anyone else wishing to testify in this? Did you want to testify? Please come on. Just tell us who, what your name is.
My name is Tiara Nakata. I graduated from Richardson Law School in 2021. I accepted a position at the Miami Public Defender's Office and that's where I met Annalisa Bernard. At the time, she was doing a lot of jury trials, so I got to experience her work after. This was how prepared she is for a lot of hearings. And she had transferred to the felony level where you have more serious charges, but maybe a less case load. And I was trying to tell her, I don't know how I do this case load like all morning and then you go to custody and then you do it again and again. And that's when she, you know, it's really encouraging and just said, oh, I did that case load pregnant for about eight months. That's what they said. Oh, okay, sorry. Yeah, it's bad, but she can have, she has so many amazing attributes that I think would really benefit the community. I worked in the rural districts, so Hannah, Lanai, Molokai. And we get kind of like a different type of Maui constituent. This is the probably their only exposure to the judiciary and I think like the level of professionalism as well as that level of understanding and empathy is like really important to the people living in Hannah, living in Molokai, living in Lanai. And I just noticed when she moved to the prosecutor's office and I followed her, she was doing sex assault jury trials. And so I think out of all types of criminal law, that's kind of the most sensitive type of work you can do. And the stakes are the highest. So I think she demonstrated that she handled the pressure very well. And she also understood what it took to build a case because she was asking investigators, what about this? Have you followed up with this? And I think that type of not only discernment, but just familiarity with the subject matter is what I think would be really beneficial that she would bring to the position. So I'm out of breath. I was walking from downtown with my mask on.
Thank you very much.
Do you have any question?
Remember any questions for this testifier? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does anyone else on the HSBA want to testify? If not, Shannon Sheldon. We're ready for you.
Good morning. Good morning, Senator Carl Rose and the distinguished members of this Judiciary Committee. The HSCA greatly appreciates the opportunity to provide its recommendation on Annalise Bernard for the District Court position of the Second Circuit. The Board of Directors on behalf of the Hawaii State Bar Association has found her qualified.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Members, any questions for Ms. Sheldon? If not, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Bernard, if you'd like to come up and introduce yourself and say a few words. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Rhodes. Vice Chair Keo Kaloli. Senator Pavella. Senator Lee is not here, but I did have a chance to speak with him earlier. Good morning, Senator Kim, Senator Acasio and Senator Gabbard. I'm honored to be here and humbled by your consideration of my appointment to District Court Judge of the Second Circuit Circuit of Maui County. I was born and raised on the island of Maui. I'm a Maui girl. My father's family has been on Maui for generations. My great grandparents were sugar plant, sugar plantation workers. And my father grew up in a plantation camp in East Maui called Hamakuahoko. And that's North Shore of Maui. After graduating from high school, my dad joined the United States Army and he met my mom during the Vietnam War when he was stationed at Subik K in Manila. And after his four year tour of duty, he brought his Filipino bride to be home to Maui where they got married and raised a family. My parents taught me to be proud of my multicultural heritage. They taught me to have strong family values. And they taught me the importance of having a good work ethic because they both worked two jobs my entire life to provide for our family. And it's because of my family history and my upbringing that I've always had empathy for those who had to work hard to overcome the adversities. And it's also why I've had the compassion to fight for those who are less fortunate than me. These are some of my underlying values and also the reason I've committed myself to a lifetime of public service. As a public defender, I stood up for those who were indigent, accused of a crime and couldn't find the means to afford their own attorney. As a prosecutor, I advocated for those who were victimized and needed a voice, and I provided that voice for them. On both sides, I worked with diverse people from all walks of life, all seeking justice in our judicial system. As an advocate to the clients I stood up for and to the victims I gave a voice to, my commitment was to endeavor always to seek justice and to do that with compassion and understanding. I've enjoyed being an advocate and have always and have had a very fulfilling career as both a public defender and a prosecutor and also in private practice. And while I do enjoy the many aspects of private practice, public service is where my heart lies. I am a public servant at heart. And I want to continue my public service to the community that raised me, nurtured me and educated me to be the professional woman that I am today. I'm honored and very humbled to be before you right now, but I would not be here if it wasn't for my community. I have to thank my family, my friends, my mentors, my colleagues for their encouragement and their faith in my ability to serve as a judge to the people of Maui County. The role of a judge is not only a privilege, but it's a responsibility. And I'm fortunate, if I'm fortunate enough to get confirmed, you have my commitment that I will serve my community responsibly with integrity to the judicial process, fairness to those who come before me, and my promise that I will endeavor always to seek justice. I thank you for your consideration of my appointment. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Members, questions? Senator Kim, go ahead.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I apologize. I didn't get a chance to meet with you, but now I have my chance to ask you some basic questions. First of all, is this a position that you know, I've seen where, and I know you, according to your application, you didn't apply for any other judgeship. So District Court is what you've applied for, but is that where you ultimately would like to continue to be in the District Court, the People's Court?
Yes.
And you're committing to the six years that you're appointed.
I am. And Senator, the reason is I had the opportunity to apply for Circuit Court as, as you know, Maui does have a vacancy. And and I, and I was encouraged to apply for it and I absolutely considered it. But I chose District Court because as a trial attorney, District Court is where we learn how to be attorneys. That's where we get our feet wet. That's where we learn how to do trials. That's where we learn how to be professionals. We're mentored by the District Court Judges. And I felt that as, you know, the newest judge that I should start in District Court. Before I start doing multimillion dollar civil lawsuits or sentencing someone to jail for twenty or more years, I should start with small claims and regular claims and deal with petty misdemeanors and misdemeanors and it's, it's, it's the choice that I made and it's, it's how I want to learn how to be a judge.
Certainly appreciate you doing that because we've seen here where, where judges have come in and been very passionate about wanting to serve for that particular court. And then in a year or less, they're applying for the next court. And so, you know, District Court is so important because it's the People's Court and it's not an easy job, right? Your workload is really tough and you deal with the people. And so we want to see that continuity, at least for the term that you are appointed to. So thank you for that. Your experience and background, I find it very interesting that you've spent a long time at the Public Defender's Office and then at the opposite end of the prosecuting attorney. So having had both sides, you know, I feel that you'd probably be able to, as a judge, be able to weigh having done both sides of that. Your resume says you're still at the prosecuting office.
I think that is, that was not updated. I left the prosecutor's office in January of 2021 and joined Wong Leong Kuchia in February of 2021.
Okay, so you've had that private experience. So I think you have a really good well-rounded background on that. What kind of temperament do you think you will have as a judge in the District Court?
I, I know it. Well, as an advocate, I like to believe that I am calm and patient. And certainly as a judge, I would want to have that same demeanor. I don't generally get frazzled. And I have, I believe I have an even keel temperament. And so I would bring that to the bench if I was fortunate enough to be confirmed.
You know, there's a lot of times we have nominees that come before us that came from the prosecutor's office. And a lot of times we're concerned that they're going to be too tough, you know, to put people away. And then we'll have people on the other end, the public defenders end where, you know, bleeding hearts and that, you know, give too many chances. And so, you know, that balance, the interesting as to which side you fall on, or are you going to be, you know, down the middle of the road? Do you have any thoughts about how you balance that?
And, you know, I have had both sides, so I understand both sides, both as a defense attorney and as a prosecuting attorney. As a judge, I plan on, you know, hearing every case, case by case, listening to the facts and circumstances of the case, lying it to the law and judging every case fairly and accordingly. I don't think I, I certainly won't be biased towards one side or the other. And again, I've done both sides, so I appreciate both sides.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Members, other questions? Senator, go ahead.
Questionnaire is, you can describe what would you do in a case prosecutor is requesting a bench warrant where someone was cited multiple times by police for illegal camping, trespassing on city parks and public sidewalks and so on. What, 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 how are you at under that?
Well, if, if the person was cited and didn't show up to court, it's very likely that I, I would issue a bench warrant because they didn't show up to court. But because those, those types of citations are violations and they don't carry within any jail time, I mean, the, I think I would use the means of the bench warrant just to bring them in and then to resolve the case.
That's, that's the reason I bring this up. We've been having a problem, maybe not so much on Maui, but in Oahu. HPD does their job. Community prosecute them for not doing their job. But they do their job. The prosecutor asked for a bench warrant. They said the judge will make the decision that, oh, that they didn't have ample time to answer the second request to come to court. So when I give you the ticket today, it has the date when you want to go court. That should be enough. Because that person does not have a home address to get that mail, the judge been throwing it all over here. And we're talking about hundreds and hundreds of them. Two, they needed to be creative in a sense of actually catching them there to actually arrest them and bring them in exactly what you just said. If we can just have them come to their court date, that's half the battle. The problem is these guys get ten to twenty. So they stop being territorial, digging out in the old area they stay because they never got arrested, never had any warrants enough to arrest. So when the officer goes over there, says, I've seen Sam here, oh, here, I said it him twenty times. Look his name up. No bench warrant was issued. So now the community gets upset that they're not doing their job. But then they misunderstand. They did their job, but because a little technicality, which we're working on, hopefully coming up, that we can change some of that because the first thing that you get should be adequate enough for you to be able to show up in court. And if you don't, you should have a bench warrant issued for your arrest and become before you guys and go through the process that everybody needs to go to get the services. Thank you for that answer. I get, I get one more chair. Maybe I don't have an answer to this because you already did. I was going to ask you, what is your strengths and weaknesses, but you already answered on with Senator Kim on what you do. So the next one will be, you know, do a judge have the obligation to improve public understanding of courts? And I think you kind of said that to other people that you've been helping. If so, should they care? Should you, how, how should you carry out that obligation? In making somebody understanding judiciary or being a part of the system?
Absolutely. I think especially in District Court because it is the People's Court. And as a judge, I would want those who come through my doors to feel that they're going to be heard, that they're going to have their day in court and really just raise the standard and the integrity of the judiciary by being known as, as a judge who, who listens and who understands. And if that means kind of, you know, explaining the process better or helping individuals navigate the court a little bit better, I would absolutely want to do that.
Thank you. Just, just, just a comment. Since I've been here, part of this committee, one of sixteen. I'm very blessed to listen to these new judges, including yourself, having the compassion to serve the people of Hawaii and the most vulnerable. Listening to your testimony today and listening to your heartfelt obligation to our people is a breath of fresh air. It's not about judging. It's not all about putting people in jail. We get enough of those people there to have somebody to have the understanding of prosecution as being a prosecutor and a defender and in private practice. I think that's a great combination and I think Maui will be blessed. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Other questions, members?
And we're talking about how do we help the public navigate the court? And you mentioned to explain the process, navigate the court better. What about changing some of the processing in the court? I've had to deal with landlord tenant code problems. And you go in and they just say, what do you say? You say, you got to come back, then you got to come back again, and then you got to come back. You know, there are some cases that you can take it right away. And it's not easy for us, for the public to jump beat for all those hoops. And yet it seems like, it's like, well, this, this is our process and you public have to jump through our hoops instead of saying, public, how is it? Can we make it better for you? So I'm hoping that as a District Court judge and being somebody new there, that during your, your time, you'll look at, how can we streamline this for the public? So they don't have to come in so many times if you can deal. Some, some cases, it's going to require because it's very detailed. And there's a lot of moving parts, but there are some cut and dry cases that can be handled very quickly. And yet it, it, they use the same template for it all. And for someone to come back and forth, especially on Oahu, you got to find parking, you got to take off from work, you have to do all, and you got to come back three, four times for a District Court case, it's not easy. So is that something you think you can commit to looking at the processing and how we change the court process to help the public?
Absolutely. And Senator, I, I, I understand that frustration, especially during the pandemic. I had family, friends, clients calling our office, needing assistance and help with the summary possession. And they were very frustrated with the process. And, you know, I, I realized that there's a certain procedure that needs to be followed, but absolutely as a judge in District Court handling these types of matters, knowing that the, the public is frustrated. I think I would have the responsibility to help them understand the procedure, prepare them if it is going to be a, a long procedural history and, and to work with the other judges and admin to try to figure out a way to make it more efficient. So if it's not working and the public is frustrated, then we should be sitting down and talking about it and making it better and more efficient. Thank you.
Other questions, members? Okay, I have a couple. So let's talk a little bit about the difficult intersection between mental illness and the legal system. I think even in District Court, you're, a judge is a lot, well, one of two, one of two ways it can come up. If there's a mental illness in question, whether the person is fit to stand trial, either one of the parties can bring it up, or I think sucesponte, the judge can bring it up as well. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So what happens? So say, say, say you go through the section seven oh four process and it's determined that the person is not competent to stand trial. Does that? What, what are your options? Do you? Because at District Court, generally the crimes that have been committed are probably no one has died or been seriously injured because that would have kicked you up to felony and on the circuit court. But what are your options? Can you send a person like that to the state hospital? Or is there, is it something you turn over to? I mean, if you're not going to try them, what happens and what are your options as a judge?
Well, you're right. In District Court, the types of crimes that are going to be in front of me would be petty misdemeanors and misdemeanors. And a lot of the types of defendants that do have mental health issues and coupled with homelessness or substance abuse issues pick up nonviolent petty misdemeanor and misdemeanor offenses such as criminal property damage or trespassing. That's a very common one, right? The problem is, you know, if a person's coming in and they're, they appear to be gravely disabled, suffering from some type of mental illness or defect, the attorney is not going to be able to have a meaningful conversation or defense with them. And if, if they're incapacitated to the point where they can't there's a lack of capacity, then, then the attorney or the judge and even the prosecutor should bring that to the attention.
I'm, I'm asking only about the specific situation where the seven oh four process is gone. You've gone through it and you determine or I guess it's a judge decision.
Unfit to proceed.
They're unfit to proceed. Then what are your options? What do you do? We'll talk about the ones that are mentally ill, but not unfit to proceed later.
Well, if they're unfit to proceed, then they can't, the, the court, the, the case has to be suspended.
Right.
Because they can't participate in it. And at that point, they're going to have a, in District Court, it'll be a one panel to 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 evaluate them and see where they're at, see if the capacity gets better or if they need medication, then that would be something that would happen. I mean, the, the goal is to get this person to be able to either be able to assist their, their, with their defense and understand what's going on, or if they're not able to, then they'll go to the hospital or divert it into another program. But we can't have people with mental health issues who don't understand what's going on in the criminal justice system and be punished and.
But what, what actually happens? I mean, it's sort of like a a reverse habeas corpus case. What, what do you do with the body? I mean, where, where do you, do, do, do you order them to to go to medication? Or is it all out of your hands at that point? Or how does that work?
You know, Senator, I do apologize. I haven't, haven't done a seven oh four hearing case in a, in a while. And so it's all kind of foggy to me, but there are specific standards that have to be met.
That's in the statute already.
Right, that's in the statute already. So as a judge, if I were to have a case like this in front of me, I would certainly you know, make sure that the standards are met before committing someone or forcing them to take medication or, you know, because it's all involuntary.
Right.
And so as a judge, if I'm going to order someone to involuntarily have to go into the hospital, lose their liberties, take medication, I'm going to make sure that those standards, those very high standards are met first.
Okay, so I, so the situation that just coin, purely coincidentally came up this morning. Somebody called me and said, you know, there's this guy who's been declared unfit for trial and he's just been released back on the street. Does that sound like a, a, a normal? I mean, that, that's kind of a nightmare for those of us who live in high crime areas where yeah, okay, the guy's mentally ill and then we don't do anything and he's back doing whatever it is that his voices are telling him to do. So I guess the question is, is there a situation where you would order him just to go back to the street?
No. And I don't, and like I said, I haven't, I haven't done a seven oh four hearing in years, but my, as my memory serves me, if a person is found unfit to proceed, we don't just release them out into the street. There's, there's a process that they still have to go through and there's mental health board and there's conditional relief. A process that they still have to go through and there's mental health court and there's conditional release and there's other options in which we're still. The goal is to try to get the mental health services and to deal with the underlying issue. And not just releasing someone with mental health. Issues and on the street without giving the services first.
Okay, so let's go, let's go to the other scenario where you suspect, as you're sitting in, you're sitting in court and you suspect that the person. Well, there's a couple of different ways it could come up. You suspect there's a mental illness issue and so you ask for a seven oh four. A hearing and they say, no, he knows what he's doing. You know, he can distinguish right from wrong. He can assist his attorney in his defense. But it's still pretty clear to you that there's a mental health issue there. Does that influence, will that influence your sentencing decision?
I think it would. And I, I think, I think it would because I do have experience as the defense attorney dealing with. Clients who appear gravely disabled and are unable to understand what's going on, unable to assist.
But, but the psychiatrist has already said they're, they're fit to proceed.
Well, if the psychiatrist says that they're fit to proceed, then as a judge, I would follow the recommendation of the psychiatrist.
Okay, that's, that's, that's what I'm talking about. It's ones where you suspect, just looking at them or listening to them during court that. There's a, a mental illness issue there, but. But once you do the seven oh four, the psychiatrist comes back and says, no. They don't meet the qualifications. So you just go ahead with the case. But what I, what I was jumping to was sentencing. So that once you, once they're convicted, presumably, let's say they're convicted. Does the fact that you believe that they may have a mental illness. Affect your, your sentencing decision? Not that you didn't go through with the court case.
Yes. And yes, I think it, I think it would affect my sentencing decision because if I knew that a person had. A mental illness, I would try to take a more humanitarian. Rehabilitative approach with that person and perhaps order that they go into some type of. You know, as a condition of probation, perhaps go to some type of a rehabilitative program. I would certainly encourage the, the defense attorney and or prosecutor to, you know. Come up with a, a agreement. To help this person. And, you know, especially on a small island like Maui. And I'm sure on Oahu as well, but a lot of these types of individuals who have these issues are going to come back. We're going to see them again. It's very likely to. So I think it's.
That was my next question. So yeah, if you, if you, you know, if you try to do the rehabilitation one on the first or second try, but then it becomes obvious that. It's not taking and they're still smashing people's windows. You know, what, what do you do? I mean, you're, you're, you're going to look at the prior history when you sentence, correct?
Yes.
And so you see one that's got four or five. Not technically crimes of violence, but ones where things get smashed, where things gets, crimes where things get smashed or graffitied or whatever. At, at some, I mean, does the fact that it's a repeat, even though you've tried to be rebuilt, rehabilitated, make a difference at some point?
That's a, that's a good question. And it's something that I've actually experienced as a prosecuting attorney in, in Circuit Court. Because in Circuit Court. A person is put on probation and if they violate probation, there's a motion to revoke probation. And a lot of times in the special services unit on Maui. Which is kind of a more handholding unit of probation. There's people with mental health issues, substance abuse issues that are not following through with the terms and conditions of their probation. With, which oftentimes includes rehabilitate, you know, doing, getting into a dual diagnoses program. You know, even meeting with your probation officer. And they start to deteriorate because they're not taking their medication. And so we start seeing them. And it almost becomes a revolving door because these people keep coming back.
It has, it has become a revolving door.
But at the same.
So then what do you do?
That, you know, at the same time, I don't think that jail is necessarily the option for someone who needs help. I think that, you know, maybe we just need to create more programs. It would be great if we had more. Programs or a diversion program or a mental health court. There's so many different things that we could think of to help people in this situation. And I think. We need to be creative as the judiciary and, and, you know, our Senate to create more programs. You know what I think would be a really.
But that's a macro, that's a macro answer. So what do you do with that individual person? I mean, what are, you know, whatever, whatever's available is what's available.
Right. That resentenced them to go back on probation and try again. I mean, if they're not a danger to the community and the issue, the underlying issue is. Mental health. Just try to address it. I mean, at some point, if they are a danger to the community or they keep reoffending, then. There potentially could be some jail as a punishment. Everything has to be case by case, though, and it would really depend on the individual person, their history. What types of options are available? And, and as a judge, I would look at. Each individual case and decide from there. And even if the person has a lengthy history of. Crimes. That doesn't necessarily mean that they need to be in jail. It could mean that they need to be in jail, but it doesn't necessarily mean so. And so to answer your question, Senator, I, it's. It's, there's so many factors that would come into play. And as a judge, I would look at every single factor and the individual that's in front of me. And try to work with counsel and the state. To try to, to try to be hopeful and come up with some type of a creative way to address. This individual in our community who needs help.
Okay, thank you. Members, other questions? Okay, I think we are complete then. Let's see. It's always post-hearing things to read in just one moment. Okay, so we're disferring decision-making for the committee until Monday, August twenty-two at ten thirty a.m. in this room in the video conference. And thank you all for being here. Thank you for being willing to serve in this capacity and. If there are no more questions, we're adjourned.